Thank you guys for being here tonight. We'll wait, hopefully a couple more folks will trickle in. But I'm Megan Smith. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works for the Town of Wellington. And I am so glad to be kicking off, well glad, it is that time again to be kicking off another rate study. And for a little, just an ounce of history. So this will be the third resident rate roundtable that the town has pulled together in my time here. So the first one we kicked off in 2021 for our sewer rates. Someone was really focused. It was an internal group led only by an internal team of town staff. A couple of members in this, in this room were part of that. I know Lisa was, Greg was as well. Okay. Lisa definitely was. A couple of board members. John was here as a board member at that time. Were involved and it was very successful in getting resident perspective and communicating the needs of the utility in a way that really got broader understanding for what it takes to develop rates, what it takes to run a utility. It was a really great outreach tool. So when we came into the rate study of full comprehensive rate and fee study directed by the board in 2022, part of that at the request of the board was to involve a stakeholder group again. And so that was our resident rate roundtable that kicked off in 2022, which Mr. Stonecifer and Ms. Chalet were a part of those roundtables at that point. Again, it proved very useful to get some feedback on the kind of community direction, the core values that we were looking to capture with the rates. We'll get into that a little bit more this evening, but I really want to thank you all for giving your time to this effort yet again, and for those new folks that are here with us. I'm really excited to be able to bring you into this process, have you learned a little bit more from the inside out, not just looking from the outside in on what it takes to develop a rate structure, what it takes to make sure that we're fully funded well into the future and are being responsible with rate pair dollars now and in the future. So with that, I would love to take a quick minute to kind of go around the room and introduce everybody. Not everybody knows everybody. And I'll start again with myself and then we'll go this direction and we'll end with our consultant team because then we'll take it away from there. Again, I'm Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. I've worked for the Town of Wellington for four and a half years, like three and a half, four and a half, 2021.
Four and a half.
Yeah. Wow. Um, that. And this will be the second, third rate roundtable effort. And as soon as I came on board, I really kind of jumped in headfirst into helping with rate setting. I really like the financial end of things. I like the budget planning. I like the Bean counting actually a lot. So anyway, call me weird.
Thank you, Megan. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. Again, thank you all for your help and your support. It's invaluable when we need to get resident input on these things. So thank you so much for your time.
Nick Creed, Finance Director.
Mayor Shosi.
Greg Stonecifer, Resident and Customer.
David Cannon, my Trustee.
Rebecca Daly, Trustee. My favorite season is spring. The things are growing and it rains a lot, so I don't have the water.
That's right.
I am Laura Moyer, Trustee.
Lisa Chalet, Resident, Customer, Previous Member of this Board.
Multi, multi round, round table.
Mining Commissioner.
Dan Sapienza, the Town Attorney.
John Gator, Resident since 2018.
James Raymond, Resident since 2013.
Todd Christian, Ralph Thomas.
Elise Ritchie, Ralph Thomas.
Todd, I'm gonna have you jump in and take it away. I didn't, I don't have printouts for this, but the presentation that Todd and Elise are gonna give this evening was, is part of the packet. For those who have a laptop, if you want to follow along, I can get those slides to you later. Or if you need anything to take notes with, if you're interested, we can pull it over something there too.
We'll stick around afterwards in case you have a signed copy.
Oh, okay. You had me for some copy.
Well, good evening everyone. Thanks for your time today. It's good to see some familiar faces here. I can't believe it's been three years. Started this the day of 2022. I think my gray hair has gotten a little worse since then, but that's okay.
I've lost all mine since then.
It's not from rate setting. I think it's from kids, so. We have an action packed presentation tonight and can everyone, dialing, can they all hear me okay? Okay, good. All right. So tonight's presentation is kind of a primer for what we're going to be getting into over the next four meetings over the summer. And some of this might be old news and some of this might be brand new and still let's dive right in here. So here are our agenda items, study goals, objectives. We're gonna go through the rate and fee study process in general. Talk about what happened in 2022, just to give some context around where we started and where we landed. Obviously, we still have some work to do from 2022. We made a lot of good strides with the advisory group in 2022. And where are our areas of focus in 2025? The goal is to not upend and reinvent everything we did in 2022. There's a couple of areas we need to focus on. So we're hoping that there's a lot that we can build on from the 2002 study without having to just to tear it all down and start over. And we'll talk a little bit about rate structure, pricing objectives that really drives, what kind of rate structure we might be making that adjusting. And rather than trying to guess what a rate structure should be, using pricing objectives to help us get there. So the study goals here are pretty standard with many utilities. Obviously, we want to have revenue sufficiency. We want to have rates and a financial plan that is going to generate sufficient revenue to meet all of your annual expenditures operating on capital. We obviously want to fund our capital via through rates, impact fees or tap fees and maybe bond issues. And we want to have fair and equitable rates. And that was a key thing in 2022 was making some modifications to improve the equity between the customer classes, residential, commercial and irrigation. And finally, the cost of growth. We want to make sure that the existing rate payers are not funding growth initiatives and that we kind of make sure that there's that equity between existing and new, and new growth customers. That's not so much a rate design item as it is a financial planning, making sure your tap fees are set correctly. We're gonna be looking at that in this study, but it's not the focus of what we're doing here. Couple other things regarding our framework, how we're taking this study or how Ralph Thomas is gonna try to do this study as we go on through these meetings here and then work with staff developing all the financial plans and rates is. It's the three Ds and we want to make sure what we're doing is defensible. Obviously, we're not gonna create something that's gonna cause legal concern and a headache for you. Also, we want to make sure it's durable, meaning that as you go into the future, in theory, you wouldn't have to hire us all the time. And that we have a framework to work and you update it annually and you might hire a consultant to come in and look at the rates and financial plan on a maybe two or five year basis. So we'll make sure that what we've got, the process we've got, the miles we have are durable and that it can withstand change and that sort of thing over the period of time. And also deliberate that the decisions we make have been well thought out and we've kind of planned ahead. Like if we do this today, what's gonna be the picture in three or four years and be thinking along those lines? Now, we obviously can't predict the future, but we can make some assumptions about whether we're making a deliberate decision on something, whether it's we're working on a financial plan as part of the study or tap fees or whether it's here, we're discussing the, the different rate designs. Finally, one of the key things here tonight is to get some more feedback on three items. One is our pricing objectives. We're gonna talk about that more a little bit later. And the ultimate role of the stakeholder group, where, where do we, where are the swim lanes we want to stay in with the stakeholder groups? So that way they have a clear direction on what their decision process and what they're need to be recommending. And finally, from a board trustee's perspective, what's your desired outcome? When we walk away from this project, what is it you would have wanted to accomplish? And so don't answer these now. Let's think about these as we go through. We're gonna come back to these at the very end and to get your feedback on how you want to approach these three, where are some of the key perspectives you want to provide to us? Because that really helps guide our study. The last thing we want to do is go through this entire study, show up to a trustees meeting and present all these results and say, wait a minute, we didn't, we didn't want you to do that. So we want to get your input today. It's really gonna help shape the direction we need to go. We can consider all those options you've given to us. Okay, so let's jump into the rate study process and please stop me at any time. I do talk a little fast. My parents are from New York, so I picked it up from them, so I can't help myself. So 2025 rate study process, there's four components to this. Financial plan, which tells us how much money or how much revenue do we need to generate in order to meet our annual expenditures? Cost of service, is everyone paying their fair share? This is this kind of black box we talked about in the previous 2022 stakeholder group. We went through a lot of detail explaining all the nuances behind the cost of service. But basically, the cost of service is this. We want to make sure that each customer class is paying their fair share. So a quick analogy, we've all been to dinner, we've gone to dinner in a restaurant with 10 of our, our close friends. And there's always that anxiety of, well, I ordered the salad, they ordered the steak. We all have to pay the same thing? And there's two ways you can do this. You can get the total bill, you can split it equally. But that's not very fair to the person who just ordered the salad. It's really fair to the person who ordered the steak. And cost of service is same thing as if you get the bill, then you split up what you paid for what you ordered. And that's really what cost of service is, making sure that we're assigning costs to the customer classes based on how they place demands and how they use the water system or wastewater system. Rate design, how to make sure our rates are fair, meaning that how we're recovering those charges. Right now, you have a two component charge. It's a service charge by meter size and a volume rate varies by the customer class. How are we going to recover the cost from each one of the customer classes within our service charge? Is it, we're gonna eliminate the service charge, just charge volumetric rates or just have a service charge and charge no volume rate? Finance director would love to have a fixed charge only guarantees of revenue, but that may not be some of the goals and objectives. That's where pricing objectives. Finally, tap fees, how to recover the cost of growth and those tap fees are one time charged to new development coming in. They want to, they want to tap into this system. We need to reserve some capacity for them and that costs money to do so. There's a lot of infrastructure involved in either. So those are the four primary components of the rate study. Where the, the rag is focused on is really the rate design. We're taking care of the financial planning and the, and we'll be talking through the cost of service with, with this group as well. But really, it's about looking at that rate design and the tap fees will be working with on, on staff as well. And we did the same thing back in 2022 and that worked pretty well. Obviously, the, the process we go through and the procedure we use to develop rates is not something Ralph Tellus made up or I made up. There's years and years of history behind it. There's a couple of manuals by American Waterworks Association and the Water Environment Federation that has published methodologies used to design rates. And real quickly, the principles we use to design water rates and wastewater rates go all the way back to the 1800s during the railroads. And were used in the early 30s during, for like telecommunications, railroads, gas and that sort of thing. It's kind of come out of that. So the electric industry uses very similar process. You think about Excel or Black Hills Energy, they use a similar cost of service process to get their rates by customer class. Okay, let's recap on 2022 here. And if I left something out from 2022, let me know. We had some guiding principles and I'll just go through it briefly, but the idea was we wanted to make sure that we knew what our charge was in 2022. And some key things are that we wanted a fair pricing structure, the cost of liver water. That's that cost of service. And we want to be fiscally responsible, meaning we want to have, make sure those rates recovered the cost by class and all and recover the cost overall to provide service to customer classes. And promote opportunities for customers to benefit from wise use of water and conservation. There's currently a tiered structure on residential right now, and that was one of the ideas is we want to maintain that tiered structure to help promote conservation and send that pricing signal to the larger water users. So some of the selected pricing objectives here, and these are fairly common ones that are selected. Obviously, the first one is revenue sufficiency and defensibility. As I mentioned, you have to have those two. Why would you want to design a rate that's not gonna recover your cost? That's kind of silly. And obviously, the defensibility is important as well. And finally, these prioritized ones, essential water use pricing, that was to ensure that the lower volume or those customers who didn't have quite the income level to meet all of their bills, that we wanted to be cognizant of that and try to design a rate structure that for low volume or the low income folks could, could still get essential water at the lowest possible rate that the town can provide. Customer impact, we did make some major, there were some major changes because we did change the rate structure and made some significant changes to that. And we wanted to kind of mitigate that as much as possible, but I'll tell you, anytime you make a rate structure change, whether you change one of the meter sized charges or you change the threshold for the residential customer class from zero to 4,000 to maybe zero to 5,000, it upends everyone's bill comparison. So even a minor change can still be resulting in some really large swings in customer bills. But there are some ways to mitigate that. Cost recovery between new and existing customers, again, that was more tap fee related, making sure that in our financial plans, we were trying to recover the cost of growth through properly set tap fees and offset any sort of cost to existing customers to fund growth related projects. And the cost recovery between classes, this is basically just cost of service. So very common pricing objectives among many communities. It's just the order in which it's important. So the evolution of water rates, and I think we've got this right here. So back in 2016, you had a two component rate structure. You had a service charge was the same for all the meter sizes, three quarters to two inches, $16.31. You had a tiered structure, zero, 15,000, 15 to 30, over 30. And at the time in 2016, a lot of communities were switching down to a very tight tiered structure. Here maybe zero to five or zero, 7,000 gallons. It comes out of the 2002 drought, if somebody, for those of you that were here in 2002. And you had some slight increases between tier one, tier two and tier three, kind of bigger jump on that, on that third tier there. So 2021, the first stakeholder committee group, you had a $66 fixed charge and it didn't vary by meter size. So there was a huge jump in the fixed charge. I think there's a huge jump in the revenue required too. And a lot of that looks like it got pushed onto the, the service charge. Cause these rates didn't charge, change too much here. You still retain the zero to 15, 15 to 30 and, and over 30. Now, like I mentioned, we wanted to provide essential water use, consider that in our rate structure and consider conservation as well and, and some sort of revenue stability. But one of the key things here was that $66, that was kind of a little tough pill to swallow. That's one thing we really evaluated. So 2022 comes along here, or 2023, or 22, all single family residential is 49.71. So we saw a dip, a decrease in the service charge. And we changed the thresholds here to recognize the essential use affordability. But instead of charging a volumetric rate for zero to 3,000 gallons, we actually rolled part of that cost into 49.71. So if you didn't use any water at all, you got charged 49.71. If you use 3,000 gallons, you got charged 49.71. This is called a minimum charge. When you have a volume allowance in, in the service charge was not, had been kind of gone the way of the dinosaur until about six or seven years ago, it started coming back to kind of address this affordability. There can be advantages to it. There are also disadvantages that if I'm a customer and I only use 1,000 gallons, I'm still paying 49.71. I use 3,000 gallons, I'm paying 49.71. But that was one of the, we discussed that quite a bit during the, during those meetings. And we thought with the way things were laid out here that it kind of addressed that equity. Now, you'll notice that the 3,000, 7,000 gallon range goes to from 456 to 1170. How is that possible? Why did it go up so much? Well, first of all, we had a financial planning increase. I think it was 5%? I'm going back to 2023 or 22, was it 5%?
5%.
For the financial plan.
To increase?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Well, the interesting thing is, is that the Town of Wellington has a really interesting usage characteristics. And I'll show you just a second. The bills here, the water use per bill for residential customers is fairly low. And especially so with those customers that have a non potable irrigation tap. So you're only using domestic usage on that meter. So a lot of the usage is between 0 and 3,000 gallons, which means we still have to recover costs, whatever is not being covered by the 49.71 in these last two tiers. Not a lot of water usage here. So you still have a high denominator and very low, or high numerator, very low denominator. Hence getting to this $11.70. But there's not that many customers up around here, very few customers. So that's the dichotomy there. And so it looks a little unusual. It probably the six to 11.70 seems like a huge jump, but I'll show you in just a second how customers use water, the residential customers here. And the sewer rates here, not, nothing too pronounced here. 2016, we increased in the service charge from 2063 to $31. Then we decreased that to 1395.
Question?
Yeah, the previous slide, it showed the top tier as 7,000 to 20,000. Was there, is there an additional tier of above 20,000?
It's cut off on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Zoom is cutting off the bottom one. Okay.
Boy, you jump, my heart, my heart, did we forget?
Okay. It's on your, it's in your packet.
Okay. So then service charges, we had, the service charges went up quite a bit and 0, 3,000 gallons of contributed wastewater sewer flow to, from residential customers was basically included in the fixed charge, same thing here. And then anything above that was billed at $6.50. Again, a lot of the flow, a lot of wastewater, a lot of indoor usage from your, the Town of Wellington residential customers and the, so that means a lot of indoor usage is going directly through the plant. So it's about 3,000 to 4,000 gallons, a lot, a lot, lot, where a lot of the water bills are and the sewer flows are as well. So what we did is we reduced the service charge 1395, but we're billing on all, based on all water usage. So we were able to reduce the service charge because now instead of a denominator of just winter average flow is all water usage. So some, some changes here. But I believe the bills came out, you know, there weren't any significant changes in, in bills when you did the calculation for the three or 4,000 gallons. So, and again, we'll be looking at this as well. So it's water and sewer, not just the water side. Okay, so the 2025 study, what are we doing this go around? Some areas of focus. Well, we're gonna kind of stay the course. So like I mentioned, that we're hoping not to tear down this entire study from 2022 and build it up. But we know that there are some assumptions and some things that do need, need to change. We were just talking this morning about some, some of the ways the budget is laid out in terms of where the costs are. Well, that's gonna change where we're putting our costs in our model. Doesn't mean we're starting with a fresh model, but there are gonna be some things we need to modify there. We want to look at the efficacy of the rate structures against the pricing objectives and say, well, did they kind of achieve what they wanted to achieve? We've got some qualitative ways to do that, some quantitative ways to do that as well. And we obviously want to update the wastewater, wastewater financial plans to make sure that you can be a going concern and that you're able to fund all of your capital projects, O and M and issue debt if you've got a good coverage ratio in your financial plans. Also, we want to review and update the tap fees. We did that last time and we've got, I think we've got better data now than we had back in 2022 to do the tap fees. And obviously, as everyone knows, inflation has gone bonkers. And so there's a lot of, you know, increases there as well as the plants are now kind of booked as an asset. And that's important for evaluating those costs. Another item was the high strength surcharges for wastewater. So that would be like a brewery coming in and dumping all their effluent to the treatment plant. That's gonna cause a huge burden on the organic loading and things. And a lot of communities have high strength surcharges. It's dollars per pound of BOD and dollars per pound of ESS. And we did a real high level last time looking at that. We didn't have all of the data available. This time we'll take a little bit of a deeper dive and see what those rates come out to be that way. If you do have a high strength type customer come in, maybe craft brewery or maybe a milk producer or anything, but they, they would be ones that are susceptible to these high strength surcharges. And a lot of communities have these really for Collins. So this is nothing unique to the town. It's fairly common. And finally, stormwater financial plan. We left that off the table last time. There just wasn't enough information. And there was too much to do on the water and wastewater side, building that up that we just didn't have time for the stormwater. So this go around, we're gonna try to, we're gonna be developing a financial plan for stormwater and looking at the fees. There's not a lot in terms of fees that we can do. It's a fixed charge right now. There's just not a lot. It's more, we're looking at the financial plan to make sure that we can afford the capital improvements in that utility. And it's really based on the Box Elder Basin Stormwater Authority that change is happening too. So those kind of are rate study areas of focus and obviously the rates are on here as well. So let's see what we got. Want to jump in just probably a little more detailed information to think about. Now, there's no conclusions to be drawn from this, but we wanted to show that there is some changes in water usage over the past couple of years and a lot of it has to do with precipitation. So if you look here, here's residential and we just did the average monthly consumption per account. So we took the annual usage of a single family customer and divided by the number of bills to come up with an average use per account in thousand gallons. So you can see in 2018, the average usage was 11,000 gallons dips down, goes back up. And when Elise and I were looking at this, we thought, well, I wonder how correlated this is to weather? And obviously, we only get monthly readings, but sometimes you get a deluge of two days in June. It may not affect the overall water use in June because it's just, you know, to two days. So we were a little, we had some correlation, but when we looked at the precipitation levels in each of these, for each of these years, through May through October, we got this from the Colorado State University Climate Center. We looked at what the precipitation was for those months for each year compared against a normal. Did you find out what the normal basis was? Was it like a certain?
Oh man, it's, it is collected over like 10 year periods. So like 1980 to 90 to 2000, etc. Yeah.
So we compare that against the, the act or the, the historical. And you can see that in 2018, we were right at 100% of normal precipitation. So we're a little higher here. So no, we don't quite know what caused that, but some of the ones here in 2023 was a very wet year. And so water usage is really down. So that's pretty clear. There's a good correlation there. It's probably way for a number of months. These other ones that may have been overall wet in one month, but not the others. Sometimes we saw a really wet June and super dry July and August. So we just put this up here for context. These are the kind of things that we look at when we look at, A, projecting our revenues and trying to figure out, well, do we project based on a dry year or a wet year or average? Or how do we do that? I think with this go around, because we have more information, we might look at kind of a range of, well, what will happen if we had a really dry year and people, or really wet year, people quit using water? Was that financial plan, what, what, does that result in a 10% increase or three or whatnot? So, but it is interesting that there is some correlation here. 22 and 21, about 80% of normal and they're about the same here. So, but I just thought that was interesting. And so there's always a lot of other factors that, that affect the usage per account too. But we just thought that was kind of interesting to show. Do you have any comment for a second?
Yeah. On that side, so 2024, last year, we had the least amount of precipitation and yet the second lowest water usage, which is a direct correlation to the rates because the rates that we did with you previously weren't in a, they were in effect in 2023, but nobody felt the effects because it was so rainy for so many months.
Yeah.
So when you're talking about promoting water conservation, can that, can you find a middle ground? Because obviously, there's a budget impact when you're, when people are literally not watering because it's not affordable.
So that's what we'll look in terms of how the rate structure needs to be organized. But also there's this price elasticity of water as the price goes up to a certain level, people are gonna cut back and we'll, we'll look into that as well. So yeah, this is interesting that I guess people turned off their tap after a while regarding some of the high charge charges. So that's where we're gonna definitely look at, we would, with this group too.
I want to also note that in 20, that 20 to 22 are also complete outliers as well because people are suddenly in the culture of staying at home and using more water than ever before. So those, those are also, it, like I see the correlation, I understand it, but at the same time, we can't use 20 to 22 to determine any of those things because life, as we know it, changed during those three years.
Definitely, definitely pronounced here.
Yeah.
So this is kind of discussion we did have and, you know, realize that, you know, there's no silver bullet for projecting the water use, right? But we need to consider what we need to consider.
Yeah.
The other thing that happened is in fall of 2020, we tripled water rates. The board tripled water rates from, and the 2020 was the first change. It was like the first increase.
That was, yeah.
So 21 and 22, people were like, ooh.
People were at home, huge rate increase. So it went down a little bit, but not much. So one kind of offset the other thing. So again, I mean, these are the, I mean, these are the kind of things that we want to bring up. Somebody else might bring that question up and want to be able to answer that. And I mean, there's no, there's some conclusions to be drawn here that, you know, there's some issue with weather here, at least with 2023, but there's one of the things, factors to consider and we need to think about that when we're looking at the redesign. Oh, there's a question.
A question. Kirsty Teaks, House Senator Henrys.
Just for clarification, when we were discussing that most of our residential water use, we're seeing around that 3,000 usage mark, was that correct when you were discussing that, the 3,000 and under usage mark that not a lot of people? That not a lot of people fell in that higher tiers?
The three, three to four thousand was, was the number. We're, we're, you'll see a slide here in a minute.
There's a lot of bills earned in three and four thousand, but then you have to worry about the summer bills going up. So when you look at the average, you're gonna see some of the seven point two and this excludes the
Yeah, this is potable irrigation.
Yes, if you have a, a tap that you're watering outside and inside.
Okay, so our average is actually running nine, nine point seven thousand.
Um, for, across those five years and for taps uh, for households with potable irrigation.
Which
Yeah.
So this excludes all non.
That excludes all non.
So we wanted, we wanted to factor in whether this has an issue at all.
With potable irrigation.
I see a question. Thank you.
Perfect. That was my question.
Oh, yes.
Trusty Mason?
Uh, thank you guys. If I may, I just maybe, maybe for, uh, a little assistance for Trusty Teets as far as that goes. The number that I have always used is that eighty-five percent of Wellington residents use seven thousand gallons per month, per year on average. If that's helpful.
Yeah, when you look at the total, so that's nine point seven with just the taking up.
Yeah, that would be overall.
Okay, well, we'll be discussing this a lot more, these sorts of things during the meeting. So just wanted to tee it up. Um, so let's look at a bill frequency and at least this is the bill frequency for everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so this is called a bill frequency or bill distribution. Um, this may look familiar from the previous study. But what this shows is usage levels, one, two, three, four thousand gallons and a number of bills, not customers, number of bills. And you can see that, um, as we go down this level of consumption, zero, one, two, three, there's, it's a bell curve and this is very typical for residential class. You have this huge bell push bell curve to the front of lower water usage and it kind of tapers off. But what's interesting is that even though you have a small amount of customers, you still have a lot of customers, you still have a few customers out here in the twenty to forty and, and so on and so forth. But what we're showing here is that the median usage is around three to four thousand gallons here. So there's not a lot of useful capital denominator and it just supports that, that eleven dollars and seventy, seventy cents I was showing you. So, um, a lot of the volume, including the service charge with all these bills. So if you look at all these bills, add these up, um, what's there, the three thousand gallon levels, those are the people that are using three thousand gallons or less that stayed within that service charge. So we're gonna examine that again and we're gonna have some more detail like this, um, when we evaluate the different structures and things.
And so just to reiterate that again, this is, this is the number of bills issued in a year, right? So it's however many taps we have times twelve of one bill per month for each taps, like three thousand, more than that, single-family taps.
Five thousand.
There's like forty-two hundred total taps. So there's like thirty-six or thirty-eight hundred members in family essential. Um, times twelve and for each of those, fifty percent of those bills that are issued in a given year use four thousand gallons or less per month.
And of course, it varies based on whether it was a dry year or a wet year.
Right.
And if we looked into that bump that's way out there, that outlier.
It might, it just might be a, a random outlier.
Or something.
Yeah, I don't know who that is.
Now, this, is this all residential or is this, does, so this includes multifamily?
No, just.
Single family, single-family residential.
This includes house.
So, again, just wanted to kind of put this here for context. Uh, no conclusions really to be drawn of when that, we've got a smushed bell curve here, which again is very typical for, um, residential customers in, along the front range in this area. Um, okay, so we're gonna dive in a little bit deeper here and I'm gonna try to, try to show how uh, when you change a rate structure, um, how it can affect bills and, and a customer's bills. So I took three different, um, hypothetical rate structures. One of them is your existing one, you know, the service charge of forty-nine dollars and the three-tiered structure, eleven seventy, whatnot.
Existing in twenty twenty-three.
Existing in twenty twenty-three. And then I took one here and I took the existing rate structure. I just modified the tiers. You know, instead of zero, three to seven, I said zero, three to ten, not too important. It's just that modify those tiers. The last one is, I said, well, wait a minute, let's just see if we kept the service charge with the minimum. We just had a uniform volume charge for any water above that three thousand gallon. So looking at those different structures, well, how does that affect where the revenue falls for the residential class? And this is just residential class. We wanna show you how, where the revenue is gonna fall in the service charge revenue, revenue gain from tier one, tier two and tier three. And so when we look at the existing rate structure, um, profile on average, you're getting about fifty-three percent of your re- residential revenue from the fixed charge. It's quite a bit. You're getting about nineteen percent of your revenue from tier one usage, three to seven thousand gallons. And, uh, tier two revenue is about twenty-one percent and tier three is about seven point one percent. But if we just change the thresholds, keep everything else the same, but change the threshold on the, on those, on the volume rates. It's a little bit different. And I think I changed the structure from threes to seven to three to ten thousand gallons, I think was the, was the change. So we're getting a lot more in tier one revenue, tier two and a lot less in tier three. This suggests that, well, we're getting less in tier three revenue, we have a little bit more revenue stability there because we're not relying on so much revenue from the top tier. So if everyone quit using water, that tier three, a lot of this would go away, but it's only four point three percent of revenue.
And that equates to the same total amount of.
Same total amount. And oh, let me point out that under these rate structure changes. So in this example, I calculated a bill at five thousand gallons with seventy-three dollars. I just rounded, okay? But if we change just the tiers a little bit, keep the same structure, but just change the threshold with the tiers, it's now seventy-five dollars, two dollar difference. We're still recovering the same amount of money in the residential class, right? It's just by changing the tiers a little bit, it changes where the revenue falls in the tiers and it changes a customer's bill. To, we're still recovering the same amount of money overall. And on a uniform volume rate, we charge a uniform volume rate for anything above the minimum, the bill would actually go to seventy-eight dollars. The only thing I'm trying to demonstrate here is the impacts. When you start changing thresholds or you change the amount of the service charge, instead of forty-nine dollars, you bring it down to thirty dollars, take it up to seventy-five dollars. And you try to recover the same amount of revenue for that class overall, the bills are gonna change. And this is that bill impact, minimizing the bill impact to customers. So this is what we did back in two thousand two. We looked at a bunch of different alternatives. We have about three or four water residential alternatives and it changes where the revenue falls. And, um, so just wanted to point that out that there's sensitivity associated when you change a rate structure.
And if I recall, the structure that we chose was a good minimum impact to customers, right? But also relative stability, revenue stability, right?
We didn't want to, we, we looked at a very low service charge, I believe, and I'm even keeping it sixty-six. I think it was, and then we, we folded in the, the minimum. That was a separate discussion. So again, just wanna point this out, this, we're gonna be looking at, this is kind of the detail we're talking about over the next, um, four meetings. And we're getting into this, we'll be providing some data behind this to support this. So this is just illustrative, a lot of information up there, but yes.
Uh, two things. Trusty Teets, did you have a question again?
I did. I just wanted to clarify, um, that this is only reflective of water usage, not your total water bill, correct?
Right, this is just water.
Well, this is, this is reflective of your total water bill, not your total utility bill.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm clarifying. Just in case the resident sees this and then they're like, my bill should be seventy-three dollars. So I just wanna clarify that this is only, this isn't focused on the full water utility. This is solely focused on the
Yeah, it's the, it's the full water utility. It's just not the full set of utilities. It doesn't have wastewater sewer and it doesn't have drainage.
My other question was, is at that hundred percent, that four point six million, can you tell me what that four point six million is?
Um, that was our, for this example, that's the hypothetical amount of revenue you were gonna get from the residential customers. So, and it's trying to demonstrate that if you change the rate structure, all else being equal, you're gonna recover four point six million dollars, but people's bills will change at the same level of consumption depending on how you modify the rate structure. It's all we're trying to show.
Got it. Is this a set goal that is trying to be achieved or?
This was the revenue that we were trying to achieve in the modeling effort in twenty twenty-two with the rate structure that was developed and implemented in twenty twenty-three. That was the financial.
So that was like our end goal.
In twenty twenty-three.
Okay, the answer is get to this number here. We don't, what, what the new four point six million dollars is, that's what we're here to figure out.
Right. And so under each one of these, you would still get four point six million dollars, but in order to do that for the same five thousand gallons of usage, those rates associated with tier one or tier two would have to change. If, if, if we're not getting that revenue out of the highest tier, then that additional revenue is gonna have to get applied and come out of the lower tiers.
Perfect. Thank you.
Basically, as you pull one lever here, this lever goes that way. And sometimes it's really counterintuitive. So just fair warning, it's, it's, uh, you have to scratch your heads and how does that, that seems. Okay, so the pricing objectives recap, this is where, uh, we're gonna solicit feedback from the trustees here. Uh, there's a number of objectives and you saw some of them in some previous slides. And obviously, defensibility, revenue sufficiency, there's revenue stability, meaning that you wanna mitigate swings in monthly revenue somehow. Uh, the cost recovery between classes, which is a cost of service, which is what we're doing anyway. And then cost recovery within a class, meaning that we're trying to be as equitable as possible to those low-volume users as is their high-volume users. Um, so it did decide, well, does it cost more to serve higher volume customers, higher users than it is lower users? And we'll talk through that. And, uh, this is cost recovery between existing and new customers. Again, this is more for tap fees and growth paying for growth. And we'll be, that's more applied to the, uh, financial plan of things. It doesn't really impact rates directly. The other group of things here is efficient water use, pricing signal, basically some conservation, um, that as you use more, you pay more kind of tiered structure type thing. Demand management, uh, you may not have this issue, but if you were running at peak capacity all the time, is there some things we can do in a rate structure that would kind of tamp down on that peak demand and shift the demands a little bit. This was a big issue in Salt Lake City. Um, uh, they used wells in the summer and a treatment plant in winter time and their wells were always running at maximum capacity in the summer. So we designed some rates to help shift that demand a little bit. Essential use pricing, this is, uh, obviously the lower income, the, uh, folks that are having trouble paying their bills to run and provide uh, essential water use, maybe zero to three thousand gallons, essential water use, lowest possible rate for those customers. And obviously, the customer impact. With this here, the customer impact is really a one-year deal because if we change the rate structure, like I mentioned, there's gonna be some large swings in some people's bills. Some people's bills might go down, others might go way up. And this bill impact is more of a one-year thing. But there's ways to mitigate that and that's maybe by transitioning the rate over a couple of years. And I think we talked about that last time, two thousand twenty-two, if we transit. And actually, no, that was a, we had some other conversations about that later, about transitioning the rates to kind of mitigate the impact. Um, there's some benefits to that, certainly, but there are some drawbacks. It's more administrative, uh, work to change the rate structure and billing system. And then there's probably extra communication required, but it depends on where we land. And it might be worth it to do a transition over two years, three or five years. And obviously, ease of administration and can your billing system handle it? I've heard too many stories of utilities or consultants helping utilities to come up with this elaborate rate structure only to find out the very end, the billing system can't handle it. We don't wanna do that. We wanna try to avoid that. So um, I think that's all the ones that were listed on that. I think we've got even hidden ones there. So
Yeah, that's right.
So these are kind of the pricing objectives here. So, um, moving up here, but there are some competing things with pricing objectives, revenue stability and conservation. Uh, with revenue stability, you'd like to have maybe a higher service charge to kind of keep revenue still stable over a period of time. But if you have too much revenue recovered in your service charge, your volume rates will be kind of mitigated and there won't be, people won't be able to monitor or adjust their bill as much because they're paying so much in the service charge. So it's kind of revenue stability and conservation butt heads a little bit. Whoops, I wanna do that. Uh, revenue stability or, uh, rate stability and affordability, it's a similar thing that if you're offering water at a very low price but low cost, someone else has to pay for that, right? It's gotta be picked up somewhere else in the rate structure by some, some group. Um, and ease administration, customer understanding, equity, defensibility. This is simply getting to, um, we can make a very simple rate structure. It's a dollar service charge and then ten dollars per thousand gallons for everybody. That's really simple. But is that really at the equity level that the town wants to be at? We wanna get to a more detailed and granular level in terms, in terms of equity, which may be a more complicated rate struc- series of rate structures and getting that in the, in the, um, billing system and things. So just some things to consider, um, with, when we look at pricing objectives here. So finally, I'm gonna come back to the question we brought up at the very beginning for, uh, the trustees here. Some key pricing objectives. How can, how can the stakeholder group help with the, the board being able to make an actionable decision on the rate structure? What is it you're gonna need from them? And the outcome, what is it, when, when we get done presenting for the last time, what is it you wanted to happen? What do you want, what do you wanna walk away with at the end of this study? Uh, these are esoteric questions, but this will definitely help us guide how we approach not only the, the rate design, we're working with the RAG here, but also forwarding behind the scenes with the financial plan and the TAP fees and, and, um, those calculations. So I will be quiet for once and, uh, turn the tables over to the trustees there.
Does everybody understand what the objective for our input right now is? Yes. Trusty Teets, you raise your hand.
I did. Um, so I think when it looks at the pricing objective, um, kind of what my hope and goal out of this would be, so when I look at the water as a whole, I look at commercial in the irrigation side of it and residential, multifamily. My goal, I would like to see more quality through the classes, not just a specific class, say residential. But my goal would be to see equality through the classes. So for example, so our commercial taps, they can have up to twenty-five thousand gallons of water for twelve dollars and ninety-three cents. Where I look at residential and we set up these tiers and I look at the tier of twenty thousand gallons and above, residents are paying twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. So I think my goal is to see that equality, as we say, be distributed, distributed among the classes, not just amongst, uh, equality in one residential section that we're, we don't have commercial users using twenty-five thousand gallons of water and only paying thirteen dollars per thousand gallons. Where residents that are use that amount, say twenty-five thousand gallons of water, they're paying twenty-three eighty-six. So high users, low users, you know, at the end of the day, my goal is to see that equality be distributed where residents are still not carrying the heavy burden of commercial irrigation costs. Because while we did an amazing job and I'm so grateful for the ones that are sitting there now that went through this section two years in a row, I still think we're missing the mark on some of the, the commercial and irrigation side of it with residential sucking up still a larger percentage of that water usage. That's would be my, my main goal out of this.
Thank you. Trusty Mason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let's see, obviously, folks, this is all a very fine balancing act that we have to kind of do here to get all these tiers and everything lined out. I think my, my outcome or what I would like to see out of this mostly is that the water utility has some, you know, obviously revenue sufficiency, revenue stability, these are probably the most important things in my book. Because if we, you know, if we can't, uh, be able to afford, uh, you know, what, what goes in and out of those enterprise funds, we're, we're doing a disservice to the utility and we won't get, if we, if we continue down that road, we won't have a utility. So I don't think, uh, so sufficiency and stability, I think are my two kind of get, uh, goals, end goals there. Um, I did like what the round table had come up with last year as far as the essential water use pricing. I, I think it's very cool that we do the up to three thousand gallons in there. Um, I might also point out just some of the research that I've been doing for a resident that uses three thousand gallons a month in the town of Wellington, including wastewater fees and sewer fees, uh, we are actually paying exactly the same, almost to the penny, as what a resident in Loveland is paying for the same amount of water. So obviously, there seems to be some, uh, when we get into the higher tiers, uh, I, I appreciate that, uh, there are residents that have to pay a substantially higher burden in that regard. But I'm also going to say, if you're a resident that's using twenty-five, thirty, forty thousand gallons on a residential property a month, um, while, while you can use it, I would highly suggest that you maybe take a smarter look at your usage as far as that goes. I, obviously, you know, we, we do have to ensure that our lower tiers are able to, you know, pay for themselves, right? We've got a lot of folks out there on in, fixed income and these types of things, right? So we can't just crank up the tier one and bring So we can't just crank up the tier one and bring tier four down, that's not going to work, right? So really, what I would be hoping to see here is just some 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 ideas out of what what we might be able to modify. Or or like I said, the the good idea that came out of the essential water use pricing last year, or it was sorry, two years ago, when this went on, I'd love to see some good ideas. I unfortunately, I don't, I'll be honest and say, I don't think there are not a whole lot of levers that we can pull on some of these things. So that's kind of what I task you folks with is getting some good ideas out there.
Thanks, sir. First, Moore?
Um, so I participated in the two thousand twenty-two roundtable and I was a huge advocate for the basic needs, essentially use three thousand gallons. I think I would like to see that stay in some capacity. But if we're noticing that, you know, that basic use has either grown or is different than that, reconsider looking at that. I, after watching this for a couple of years and hearing from the public and seeing the bills come through, I definitely think there might be some adjustments that can be made to the tiers to make it more equitable. Bring down what that second tier has to or the first year has to deal with. I agree with trustee Tete in that, you know, I think we talked about it in that roundtable as well in terms of bringing equity across the board to the different uses, but also recognizing that those different uses are going to have. It can't be completely equitable, I guess, is what I'm trying to say in terms of the pricing, because the use is so different. But finding a way to make sure that we recover our costs and bring in the revenue that we need to regardless of the weather. So focusing in on, you know, planning for those differences in seasons, right? A dry year versus a wet year and just being proactive in terms of looking at a plan that really does do the best that we can for all the residents, but make sure that we cover our costs. And I know that everyone listening would love to hear us say that we want to bring down the prices because in our hearts, that was, you know, we all want to do that. But that just might not be possible, and so I want to be really honest about that. And just say that, worth it.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Regarding objectives and our values, it kind of goes along with what I'm hoping to get from the perspective of stakeholders. I have a pretty good sense of like the values in which I would want to build for or how I would want to build that out. But the reason we we have the stakeholders here is to get that perspective for residents and commercial users. So I'd love to hear, you know, like the definition from the perspective of stakeholders, what those values are. And I think that is really my objective, is understanding what stakeholders want their values to be. The other thing that's really important to me is regarding cost of service. And we, the big push for equity across is across classes. So we're talking about residential versus commercial irrigation, is that you pay for a bill that is actually the cost of what it costs to get that water to you, right? So in my mind, that's the fairest option, because you're actually paying for exactly what you're getting. Other things that I want to contribute to that conversation is benefits for any kind of development that builds in improvement to cost of service, so whether it's multifamily or anything like that. I want to make sure that those realized savings in the cost of service are actually reflected in the bills that those people are paying. Because in general, if we're encouraging affordability, that's not just in your utility bills, that's in overall. So if there is additional benefits of living in a in a method that's affordable, I think that should be reflecting your utility bills as well, especially if it costs less to get you water than other users. So I definitely want to make sure that whatever we build out considers that affordability and for people who are actively making decisions to live more affordably. And with that said, too, I do want to make sure that we encourage smart water usage through our our bills, because nothing is getting better in the situation of water and delivering water. So it is in my mind, a responsibility that we are helping people to learn to be better and smarter with their water, because it's going to be a long term forever battle that we're going to have to be learning. I want to make sure that that cost of service is also reflective of the weather. So if we are not delivering as much water because the weather is fantastic, I want to make sure that we're then not trying to make up for those costs elsewhere and still charge people a lot of money, even if they are using less water. And we're we're not spending as much money to get water to deliver. So I just want to make sure that our model is reflective of a lot of different considerations of cost of service, not just necessarily based off class. So objectives, that's what I was hoping for stakeholders, in addition to defining values. I definitely want to have help prioritizing the model that that this group thinks is the best way to do it, not specific costs, but a model and and understanding of how bills should work, whether that's, you know, what level the tier should be at or the base costs or what's included within the base costs or anything like that. And make sure that relates to those values that are defined. I want to make sure that that group understands in detail what the actual revenue requirements are and have a very clear understanding of the situation which we're in. And my hope is that by defining values, by creating a model that you think upholds those values, understanding the real situation before us, that then these stakeholders, with all the information that they are now available, have available to them, will be advocates and help people to be smart water users and to encourage and have, you know, the community understand that you know, residents and business owners help to do this process. We get a lot of flack on our group because they think we're making decisions blindly or something like that, when really, we are seeking a lot of assistance and help and education to make those decisions. So my hope is that with the understanding that the community is involved, there is also acceptance of that, so that's my hope, too. When it comes to the outcomes, one model and view that I want to make sure that we're doing is showing a collective utility bill of all utilities in comparison to other communities. What we see a lot is somebody comparing a neighboring community's water costs against their entire bill, without the understanding that that is three plus utilities within their one bill, that they're comparing against published rate just for water alone. It's not apples for apples, and I think overall amounts is well, is fair to compare for one. And then again, helps that with their understanding, because they'll say, you say our water rate is only this, but my bill's huge, so obviously, you're doing something wrong and I'm being billed more than I should be. That's one sense that's happening, but really, they're comparing three utilities versus one. So I want to make sure that the understanding, education that we can do is so obvious. I love showing it in a format of our actual utility bills as well. So when they're opening their bill or they're looking at it online, what we're telling them and how the bill works is exactly what they're seeing when they open it up in their bill. So I want to make sure the presentation of the result is as easy to understand as possible. And then I also want to make sure that our model has flexibility, not just in revenue needs, but also in cost needs, if those were to change, to be super flexible for us to make sure we can adapt that model to every possible scenario in the future. And that's all my notes.
Thank you.
Trustee Cannon? Couple of comments, hearing this. I think it's important for us to keep in mind that commercial users are in different class, commercial users provide revenue to the town that we don't get through residential, residential property taxes are low. Commercial property taxes are high, commercial businesses also generate sales tax revenue, which funds town operations in general. And in order to promote commercial growth within our town, you know, there's not, there's nothing we can do about property taxes, that's that's at the state level. But one thing we can control is the utilities, the cost of their water, the cost of their water service and sewer services and so forth. So I am more in favor of keeping commercial customers at a lower rate. I think generally, they will use more water than residential. You know, restaurants are going to use water for washing dishes, for cooking, preparing, cleaning up, everything else. So in order to promote that in commercial growth, which we desperately need, I think it's important that maybe we consider that that utility rates is is the one variable that we can have some flexibility with. But my initial objectives, and this is not in order of priority and there's, and it's not exhaustive, because I'm sure I'm going to come up with more, but one of the things that's been driving me is the affordability for residential users. You know, the base rate, the consumption that they use. I know we are introducing the an average billing process, I'd like to see that across the board. Now we were reducing those big spikes that come up and they're over the summertime versus the wintertime and people get that first bill in May or June and go, ah, you know. It needs to be understandable, I mean, people need to understand it, so it needs to be simple to read, simple to understand. And it needs to make sense to our residents as well. We have to be sustainable to cover all our costs for the operations, for the treatment, for the transport, for the recovery, and treatment again. You know, so we have to make sure that we have rates that cover those costs. But also, I'm really keen on promoting conservation, either both in in pricing and also what we can do as a town outside of the water study for education to help people learn how they can control their water costs better. But those are my big comments so far.
Thank you. Where I'm personally at with these objectives, I think revenue stability is one of the biggest key factors we need to take into consideration with the fluctuation of, you know, having a rainy summer or rainy or dry, right? That's that's huge, we need to make sure that that's stable, that we're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot there. Cost of recovery between classes, I think, is very, very important. And I I do believe the classes should be different, commercial, residential, we don't want to push the commercial out of, you know, how we want to bring commercial in to help the town be more vital in that sense. And I think the stakeholders that are here are prefer the people to do this, and thank you for each and every one of you for accepting to do this and taking your time to do that, I really appreciate that. And I think affordability is, I mean, well, I know it is an issue, right? How how much can we actually impact that with the current situation? With where the water is at, I don't know, I would love to see that be addressed, but I don't know what the real feasibility of that is, but who knows, we'll see what what comes out of this. But definitely, definitely the stability of that revenue, I think, is is going to be key. I think that in and of itself, depending on how we do it, could be a natural way of of conservation for some. I really like the idea of making the small adjustments of different classes on that modeling that you showed, that that middle one, I really something along there is we're not relying on the highest rate payers in those situations where the climate may reduce their use, things of that nature, so or if they just stop watering that amount, right? So capturing more of the residents in one area, I think, would be beneficial personally, but that's what you guys are here for, figure it out. So that's that's where I stand, does anybody else have any further they would like to say as far as trustees? No.
I'm super excited, so I can't wait to see what the roundtable comes up with. I'm excited to see that the storm getting added in this go round, because I know we've been watching that budget line item exceedingly close, so I think that it's great to see additional planning coming up and I'm excited to see, we had fantastic things come out of this group and while we have some new ones, we also have experienced previous trustees and members that have been involved in this before. So I'm excited that it's not all brand new education and learning for Reftalis. You have some people that have experience working with you guys already, and I think that is exceedingly important in this matter. But other than that, I'm grateful for Reftalis and for those that have chosen to volunteer, it is not an easy task. I would not have signed up for this roundtable if I was not a trustee. So I really do, I'm excited and encourage you guys to explore every option that you can. And hopefully, we come out of this with some amazing revenue revenue sufficiency moving into the future.
Yes, Megan?
I just wanted to, so we did go around the room and I I caught a lot of notes of kind of around the pricing objective recap from all of the trustees. But I really only got kind of ideas of a role of the stakeholder group and like what means, what would produce a successful study from trustee Daly? If there are other points that any of the other, the trustees would like to chime in on and kind of how they what they see the role of the stakeholder group in this as far as weighing in on on resident value, you know, resident values, rate structure. You know, what would define success, does it, does it? Are you hoping to see a change in thresholds? Are we, why did get, I actually guess a lot of define success around revenue stability for the utility that seemed like a key one that almost everybody said, so.
Okay.
Just want to make sure I'm capturing all of that.
Okay. Okay, so another thing I will get, so what I think would be successful is seeing something come out of this group where essential use pricing is a thing and remains a thing, I think that is that is huge and vital for for any community. Having, looking at the tier structure or thresholds and addressing that so we can increase revenue stability in those situations of drought, things of that nature. And then I would agree with trustee Daly on, and trustee Cannon on their points of the billing structure being simple and easy to understand. So people aren't confused looking at it, and it's easy to educate when those changes do come across. So there's not as much confusion. And using what you all have is your guiding principles, right? So what makes you, what you remember wanting to do this, leading through this with the understanding that we can't, we can't change everything, but we can do the best we can to make this fit for the community in the current situation that we're in, I think would be, it's going to be huge. So that's what I would consider a success personally. Trustee Moyer?
Yeah, so I agree with a lot of what y'all said, also I do understand, you know, that the class is different, the use is different between those classes. So I think just some, when speaking about that equitability, just finding a way that there's stability within each class and no one class is carrying the burden for another. That essential use is highly important to me, but I'm not opposed to seeing that fluctuate. And I think, you know, when Todd mentioned not having to hire you guys again and again and again and again, I mean, that's a goal for me, right? Is that we come out of this with a plan that we can use and update and look at annually and move forward and maintain as a town, not that we don't really appreciate y'all, but I'm sure you're pretty expensive, so. And then, this is a nice jacket, so. But and then, yeah, I think each person in this room is here. But, um, and then, yeah, I think each person in this room is here on this roundtable because, uh. We see in you. You know, your intelligence, your care for the town, um, your assets are important. Each one to the roundtable and helping to form the opinions that you'll bring to us. Um, and we trust you, so I would love to see, um, just use your lived experience and. Um, what you know, what's going on throughout the town and what you feel in your heart, um, that you're moved to do and make the best situation for everyone in this town as you can. And that's what we're looking for from you. Is that enough, Megan?
Yes, that was beautiful.
Trustee Teets?
Yes, um, I kind of shadow what trustee Moyer had stated. Um, the main goal when it came to balancing out the shared classes would be not. Having residents choose to go elsewhere because they discover that commercial is not. Paying their fair share. So that my worry is, is the alienation of residents discovering these kind of things and then deciding they're gonna go out of town to eat. Um, people have been known to. Do things like such for much less and water is a very sticky, sticky topic. So I just know that I have heard multiple people already state that, that they eat elsewhere because of this fact. So I just wanna make sure. That we're not alienating. The, the residents and businesses relationship when we look at those tier structures. Um, the other goal would be, I know it was mentioned that we have some really high users. And I, I truly feel that we have some work to do with certain HOAs that have large. Um, grass requirements for their properties. And I don't know if this is something that we can do, can work with them as part of this specific group. But I do truly feel that some of these high users, me being someone who lives in a subdivision that has two acre parcels. And the outskirts of our, our homes here, they all have two acre parcels. They were required. To have a certain amount of green space compared to. Rock. So I think that that needs to be taken into account that some of these people don't have the choice to. Not use twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand gallons of water unless they want to go in front of their HOA board, apply for certain variances. Because while we have rules that help cover backyard zero escaping, front yard is a lot more difficult with HOAs. So I don't know if that's education based or what can come of that, but. I do know that there are residents in our subdivision that are paying in the uppers of a thousand dollars a month to keep their required, when they bought their home, green space, green. So I know that we put special ordinances in place. But also at the same time, I don't know if that's an education piece that we need to also work on when we roll out any of the new rate fees. I know that there is an additional subdivision where they were required in town to put in large areas that have larger lots of green space, so. I don't know truly if it's people that are choosing to have a beautiful green yard or people that were required to have such. And I think that needs to play into account when we discuss that if you're a high user, you need to stop using as much water because I truly feel sometimes some people don't have that option. So that's kind of my goal is possibly. Uh, communication or partnership also with the heavy, heavy users on why they are utilizing as much water as they are. But also acknowledging that giving large breaks to commercial, while it may help them stay here, it might not help customers continue to shop there. And then I agree on the essential use, but I'm also not saying that the three thousand I'm stuck on. If we come out of this figuring out that four or five thousand seems to be that lower. That lower tier in the burden of essential use pricing, I'm super flexible on looking at what that means if we have to change that some to still make it to where. We're not pricing out our seniors and lower income users.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee? Uh, member ten Mason?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, Ms. Smith, I think just to kind of recap what I was looking at here, uh, really my, my goals would be. Uh, revenue sufficiency and stability, right? Why, obviously we need to, we need to ensure that the, uh, enterprise funds are balanced. Um, other than that, I, I would, I would agree that essentially use pricing is key. I, I do not think we should expand that tier. I think three thousand gallons is. Is, uh, probably about where we, where we should keep it if, but I'm, I'm certainly open to suggestions if, 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 uh, you know, if the roundtable comes back and says, well, maybe we should up it to four thousand. I'm certainly for hearing that out, but of course we are also not in the business of giving things away. So I think three thousand is, is, uh, kinda the right. Area-ish, we should be in there. Uh, but then in terms of revenue stability and sufficiency, I, I suspect that potentially by. Uh, either increasing, well. Potentially increasing the amount of. Per thousand gallons that is in the first and second tiers and maybe kind of backing off the third tier, we could. Attempt to save some money and also. Uh, potentially guarantees, guarantee some additional revenue there. Uh, so I, I think that would be worth, absolutely worth looking into. Um, and then I do, I also wanna. You know, to, uh. Trustee Cannon's points as, as well as trustee Moyers and, and the ma- Mr. Mayor and. I, you know, when it comes to our commercial unit users, uh, obviously this town is in, uh, dire need of. New businesses. And if we decide that we are going to, uh, penalize those businesses for. Uh, or, or cause their bills to be excessively high at some. Uh, fear that people are not going to go to those businesses. I, I guess I don't really maybe, may, maybe I don't quite understand that argument. I guess. What I would say is obviously we are in the business, we, we need businesses here in the town, right? Uh, that's, that's, I think that should be very clear to everybody. Um, so let's not overburden our commercial entities. And, and I guess that's what I would say there, so.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Ken?
Again, I'll just, again, thank you, uh. Mayor Pro Tim Mason for that comment. Again, commercial users are important to us. The commercial businesses because of revenue they generate. That revenue helps pace for our parks, it helps pace for our streets, it helps pace for. Sales for administrative staff and public works officials. It allows us to. Provide better services outside of the water realm. To our residents. And losing a business, we've all kind of cringed a bit when Soul Square closed down for a bit. And with the cakery closed down, now they've been replaced and Soul Square is back. But we're trying to generate. More commercial business. Sales taxes are the lifeblood municipal government. And if our, and if our water prices push these commercial users out of town. Or they close up. Then everybody suffers. Every resident, every other business, it, we all suffer from that. So I, I think there needs to be a distinction between. Commercial and residential. It's not that residential are paying more than their fair share. Because. Commercial is paying their fair share plus more in what they provide in sales and property chances to us, so. So, um. I would agree that revenue sufficiency and revenue stability are important. Those would be my main objectives.
Thank you.
Is it possible for me to comment and get some clarification on a couple of things since this is kind of around what you guys want us to do?
Absolutely.
Great idea.
Okay, so a say from. Don, who was a trustee at the time, I'm the only other person in this room with Megan. That, and I guess Patty were there too, but that participated in the very first one. Right? And it was very different from what we did. A couple of years ago because we was very data driven. We looked at a lot of numbers and what growth projections were, what the. The old plant capacity could be, what we saw things gonna be, what it was gonna cost for us to be able to. Finish building what we needed to build and get on to the next phase, right? And now here we are on this next phase. And so there was a lot, it was very technical. There was a lot of background and it was. Very instructive in terms of really understanding how this, you, this utility works. From a financial model and how it impacts everyone else. And so. I don't like, it would be impossible for me to impart to you everything that I know from that one thing, right? And that's probably this much information, but it's a lot. And we made. Suggestions based on. What was literally best for the enterprise fund for the super side of things. And I recall when the numbers came out two years ago for what the, the, the wastewater was gonna look like, that. Honest to goodness, my bill varied by like twenty ninety cents from what we had come up with. Internally versus what we ended up with. So we knew that we were kind of on the right track, those of us that were on there. In twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Obviously the focus very much was different. Understanding that things were gonna be more expensive. Really focusing on taking care of those people that are on fixed incomes. I don't even know that we really said low income. It was more like low users because. The base rate did only give you the privilege of turning on your tap. Did not buy you one drop of water and that didn't seem right. And we were all in agreement, very much so. This was not a point of argument at all about. Guaranteeing a water utility, well, an overall utility bill. For those people that are on fixed incomes so that they could budget, right? Like budgeting is everything. And that was the value. And the other piece was. Everyone paying their own way, whether it was new development or existing users, commercial, irrigation, multifamily, residential. And it was all based on cost of service. Am I right? And so. While I very much think that there needs to be tweaking, it was our first go at what we were doing, right? And understanding what our values were. One of the things that came out of that. But at least internally, as we were talking about it and we were coming, coming up with our recommendation. Was that in the previous model, everything that had been happening prior to that, residential. Users were overwhelmingly carrying the burden. And multifamily users. Of both commercial and irrigation. This new rate structure that we did two years ago righted that wrong because residential. Everybody was supposed to pay their own way and that includes commercial and the number of commercial users that use a lot of water is minimal in this town.
It's like half a dozen.
Yeah, it's not very many. Right? And I have myself taken upon myself with one of our high water users who has a very low impact on the wastewater side. Because of the nature of how he uses that water to try to advocate for him. On the sewer side of his bill. But I don't, I think of a lot of these small businesses, including restaurants that don't use an overwhelming amount of water. So it concerns me. When the feeling that I'm getting is that we're supposed to find a way to incentivize business by their water bills. And you all know as trustees that I'm a huge advocate of economic development. I have been jumping up and down about it. Since twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, somewhere around there. I am a bigger advocate for the majority. Of the people in this town, which are residents. I love every business here. I would do anything for them. Everybody has to pay their own way. That includes new development. Right? And so. I really need clarity on, are we still on that model of you guys wanting us to pay? Everybody pays their own way.
From my point of view, yes.
Okay.
That is, that is my direct, if I came across differently, that's, that was not.
I don't think that. I think maybe trustee Cannon and I respectfully, I agree, right? Commercial, they do pay more in taxes, all of that, but. The majority of the. Revenue for this town is generated by residents. The majority, like the majority of our water users are that way. Any money that's spent here is like, we're not a high touristy spot. It's generated by residents. And so I need to know what your, what you're really trying to say so that we're meeting the roles of, of the board, right? I think that's super important. And one last comment to, uh, trustee daily. I think. The ideal that. Those of us on this board are able to help, help inform residents is wonderful. But I think Greg would agree with me that when you are someone. Trying to help people understand the water bill who don't really pay attention, don't really want to. We become the bad guys. We are very much targeted.
Yeah.
Right? And, um.
Bring it on.
Well, I like that attitude.
I mean, I kind of, like, I'm used to it. I mean, I.
I was gonna say, your skin's got a bit slick by now.
At this point, like between this and a couple of planning commission things, like I'm good, right? Like people like to say terrible things to me at the grocery store and the hide of things, but. I think. Greg and I have both demonstrated surely, um, at least online, that we're willing to try to explain things, whether people are willing to try to understand them are two different things.
Yeah.
But I would really, really encourage you all to come up with a plan. That really informs residents. Of all of these different things, what the cost of services, why does, why is your bill this high? This is what it's cost. Why does it cost that much? These are all the factors that go into it.
Yeah.
Because people don't get it and we, everyone in this room knows these water bills are not gonna suddenly be fifty dollars. That isn't realistic. Everything is going up. God forbid I went grocery shopping today. Like, everything is going up, but I think it has to be a group effort. And everybody has to have the same overall goal of what you want out of this, right? And then also the same overall objective of really informing people because. We've been doing this for how many years and people don't, they just don't get it. And it gets exhausting and. I mean, I don't know about, but I get burned out after a while. Like, I don't like people calling me names all the time. I mean, if I earn it, okay, but like not in this cir- circumstance, right? And I think that. I mean. I'm sure, um, John knows a lot about what we did last time, right? And like, this is a very informed group. And those that are new hopefully will become informed. I know there's a couple of people maybe not here or they're online. I don't really know, but. So be listening. The other question I would have in clarification, and maybe this is, um, to you, Todd, is when we're talking about. Tap fees, cause that's gonna be part of this again. Does that, and the infrastructure, does that include like? Large new development that would account for situations where maybe the town of Wellington has. A joint financial cost sharing agreement for infrastructure, for water and sewer? Because if it, and does that money come out of an enterprise fund? Do you know what I'm saying?
Um, no, I don't know the answer to that. I think for, for Taffy's mark expected is just calculating what those individual fees might be. Now. If there is something like that that would require. A special analysis or something, we, we would certainly do that, but, um, our, our scopes really just went as a character updating that schedule.
Right. So I'm just thinking in terms of when you're looking at what the cost of services overall, right? And tap fees and all those things. Would that then, and maybe Megan, you're better to answer that in the circumstance of. New development that may be coming online or development down the road. What is the policy on that? How are we making sure? That if the town decides to incentivize development, commercial or residential. And we decide that we're gonna go into a cost sharing agreement for necessary infrastructure. That may benefit that development now or future development that's added on to that as we grow. How are we making sure that we're covering all of that now?
I can't believe I'm gonna say this out loud. Cause Cody was one of the last phone calls I had today and he was like, do you need me to come tonight? And, uh, though I would normally look at Cody. But, um, I, those kinds of agreements have to come before the board. So if there's ever, um, so the development of tap fees would be at a. What does it cost for each individual type of tap to connect to the system? And what does it cost for us to hold that, to reserve that capacity within the system? So we know that that, that per tech capital investment requirement. And then if there is a decision to go into some kind of capital cost sharing agreement with the developer where we're helping offset costs, but you know, when we're making some kind of deal for to bring development. That has to go before the board for approval.
Right, but where does that, if we say, yes, we're going to go into this agreement. Where does that fund come from? That money come from? Does it come from the general fund or does it come from the enterprise fund?
That would have to go before the board for approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For it to come from anywhere, for, for there to be a reduction in costs.
Our current policy is it's developed and pays its own way.
Right.
And as far as I know, we have never.
Never changed that.
Entered into an agreement to cost share. With. With the developing.
Okay.
But if, if we were to.
Question, it would go before the board to choose where that money came from.
Exactly, to define it.
So it could be pulled out of.
So in essence, if you guys decided that it came from the enterprise fund, that could in essence then impact. The price that the current residents are paying.
Yes.
And that is where it goes back on the whole.
Yeah.
Goal of what this board just said and what previous boards have said. And. Many of you. Past and present ran on, which is that. Development pays its own way. And I know we have a cost sharing agreement out there right now. With then three hundred acres, cause it was just in our planning commission packet yesterday.
We're not, we haven't reduced any. We're not, we haven't reduced any impact fees or allowed a reduction in.
Okay. I mean, we can talk about this offline. I can show you what I'm talking about, but but that's one thing, right? And I'm just saying, as things go on and you wanna incentivize people, if, if you choose to incentivize them and you choose to take that money out of the enterprise fund, you are then also choosing to impact current users, which goes against the whole idea that new development has to pay its own way, that current residents shouldn't have to pay for new development. Right? And so that's why I'm asking the question. I think this is like really important in the overall scheme of everything that we're doing. If you want a model that's sustainable, you can't throw curveballs at the enterprise fund.
So correct, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this. There are state statutes that talk about provisions against partnering with businesses and so forth like that. Home rule has a little more flexibility. But typically, there's a revenue stream established where that's a DDA with TIF revenues, that you can take those TIF revenues and you can legally use those TIF revenues as an incentive to promote commercial property. But taking it out of the general fund, that's, I think that would violate any taxpayer agreements we have. It gets, it gets real tricky and I'd hate.
Right, but we don't have any TIF or anything like that right now. So essentially, there should be no way to burden the enterprise fund and the current users with any incentivization of discounting their.
I don't think that's like on the point of this side.
Right, no, but I'm saying to that point, like, when you're talking about values or you're talking about what is the overall goal of this, that's why I asked the question. Because if we're doing this and we're making a recommendation and we're meeting the goal of you wanting to have a model that's sustainable and usable moving forward, for me, maybe because I have too much information, wanted to understand what those impacts look like and are we able to actually achieve that?
And I appreciate you're looking at a whole, whole picture view, but just to be super clear, there currently are no policies or ordinances or anything that indicate any policy towards incentivizing at this moment. And there's currently no plans that are active to do that. So I, I wanna make sure that we're not thinking about something that's not even happening right now.
So. Well, based on his initial comments about.
Let me defend myself on that too. Okay, I'm not saying that we need to cut a break and take it out of the enterprise.
Okay.
Well, all I'm saying is, is if we use commercial rates and we structure those rates so we have cost recovery and we have financial stability and we encourage perfect growth. Put it in perspective, five hundred thousand dollar home, a residential home, is assessed at about thirty-five thousand dollars, and they pay, they pay the mill bill on that thirty-five thousand. The same commercial property at the same value is assessed at a hundred forty-five thousand. And then they pay their, their mill levy on that. So their taxes are about seventy-five percent higher than the residential taxes. That's a burden statewide. And if we wanna, and, and on a day I'm asking is, is when you look at those rates, I don't wanna see a bigger impact than what we currently have on commercial business. So I don't wanna see that raise because I think it would threaten our commercial businesses.
What if the cost of service for those commercial businesses happens?
If it goes up, it goes up.
A quick comment on cost of service, just real quick. Maybe another consideration for commercial, just because it truly costs less to provide water to, like, larger taps, for example. So maybe if we're really considering cost of service, it could be based on tap size. Because if, if the method of delivery costs less to deliver that water to those customers versus others, maybe that would be a consideration. No, I just really wanna break down that cost of service really at, at the next level, not just the class, but actually, how much does it cost to get you the water that you use?
And I, I think one thing that could help and maybe get a bit to trustee Teets's concerns too, is around back to Lisa, what you were saying, the right amount of education available to clarify and describe what, what is out there. So and, and with each iteration of this, we've gotten that much better each time.
Yeah.
So I know we'll have even better to stand on, but like, just a better means of explaining what cost of service is, how that impacts the rate structure and that sort of thing.
So I am, real quick.
I have a suggestion, maybe to simplify this whole conversation, is, is it fair that we just operate under the assumption that we're gonna set tap fees, assuming every single person who comes to town will pay this tap fee? And if at some point this board chooses to change that, that's on you guys. Is that a fair assumption to make this portion easy, is everyone who comes in and builds, they're gonna pay a tap fee? And we figure out what that tap fee is? And if you guys decide to change it down the road, that's not on us, that's on you.
Well, and also I don't think that the, again, the recommendations aren't gonna come in full dollars and cents when it comes from recommendations from this, but the values behind it and the, the, the logic behind how those items are assigned is super vital. Because we can't commit that if you come and put a dollar amount on the page, that's what's gonna go into our budget, right? There's other considerations that have to happen, but I wanna hear why that's, why that's a consideration, how you came to it, what's the logic? Why are those the values in which we should charge what you're recommending? I just don't want anyone to come to this group saying, I would like to charge twenty dollars and three cents for this. It's just unfortunately, that's not how we'll be successful. But, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, by no means do I want anybody to become a social media crusader. I don't think that helps anyone. I think it's super hurtful. But I can say that one hundred percent of the times I talk to someone about their bill, sitting with them, we left with a general understanding and clarification as to why their bill was the way it was and more understanding about the entire situation. Not to say they suddenly had more money to pay their bill, that didn't happen. But the understanding of working with someone one-on-one and advocating and the understanding and the sense of education rather than this is just what it is and I'm also a resident paying the same amount. That, that's what I hope that you can stand behind based off this process. So, but I don't, don't fight on social media on my behalf. Please don't ever do that whatsoever.
I don't think that's the case, but I know Greg and I have both tried to.
I know, and I see it.
And for people exactly how it works, right? But people, there are people that don't wanna understand.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Greg.
Yeah, I just have a couple of points of clarification I'd like to hear from trustees as well. I echo your concern about, we will gladly be the backup support of helping get the message out, but I, I trust that there is a communication plan that's not reliant on us. And then also, one thing I haven't heard much on, the efficient water use signal. And this comes to some of trustee Teets's comments. For those of you who don't know, I have an extensive background in utility management. And so there, in my mind and the way the rate structures, the tiers are structured right now, there is a point in each class where above that usage is just excessive and wasteful. And in my mind, there needs to be a signal that says, you need to bring this down. And that needs to be a financial incentive. In my mind, it's, it's a financial incentive of it's actually more affordable to re-landscape than it is to keep paying these water bills and maybe advocate with our HOA to do that. Also, where that level is, is different between the classes. Commercial users are generally going to be higher water users, and that is planned in the planning of the utility. Residential, that number is lower, that's planned in the planning of the utility. Those users that are twice or more what that expected maximum is, put an exponentially higher burden on the utility to meet their needs. Therefore, they should be paying an exponentially higher cost for that burden of replacing. What, what is the feedback from the trustees on that part of?
I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you in that aspect. I think that you need to pay for what you're using and you need to pay exponentially more if you're putting the burden on your system because that in turn is what's gonna cost us upkeep on that system down the road. Infrastructure issue, right? And so we need to, that's where I come back at, like, the cost recovery. So I think they're more or less hand-in-hand in that aspect for me.
I agree absolutely. I mean, if, if those high users are the ones who are making us have to maintain, you know, peak levels that have to be this high, I mean, that is at that cost of that. If, if they weren't such high users, we wouldn't have to, you know, make sure that we can guarantee those peak levels at that, at that rate. So above all, I want us to not, I want us, again, to encourage people to be smart water users, and that comes through price for the majority of the time, in addition to all the communication education that we wanna do and are doing separately of that. But we have to encourage people through dollars to think in their most, most best interests for now and in the future. We need to be having them go in the right direction. So that's gotta be part of it. And if they're putting a strain on the, on the system, they need to pay for that.
Let me add one more clarifying question to this. The, the level tiers we have right now are pretty well aligned with industry standards, that twenty thousand being kind of the cutoff of where you trip into is a really high. Is that something that trustees want to see is alignment with general standards across industry? Or dial it down more specifically to this community? Do we want to look at, okay, maybe our higher users need to be accommodated a little more because we have these. I mean, like, so that, does that tier four need to be at a higher level? Because it's specific to our community? Or do we want to align more closely with, with what is industry practice?
I think I really want you guys to kind of, I, I would hate for us to sit here and say, I want the tiers to be this, I want the cost to be this, I want this to be the, this is the, the, you know, distribution. And I, I think we have enough knowledge in this group to make a really good suggestion on what those should be. Obviously, we don't wanna differ so far from industry standard that we look crazy. But also, I mean, we are Wellington and you guys are on this Wellington board. So. But I think, I think that's where we're gonna rely on you guys to make your best decisions based off of the best information that you're receiving. So we're putting a lot of trust into you for that.
Could be more?
Um, yeah, thank you, mayor. I was gonna say something similar. I feel like maybe the last fifteen, twenty minutes have been a little bit more in the weeds than I anticipated us getting with this. I feel like this is not an exercise I remember doing in twenty twenty-two with the sitting board at the time. And I feel like the reason we all suggested someone that we value and trust in the community to be a part of this was because we trust their opinions and their ability to make sound decisions. And so I agree with trustee Daly in that I don't wanna say, do this, the tiers need to look like this because I've been through the process and I want to allow the autonomy for this group to look at everything and the updated, updated data and make their own sound decisions based on what they know the community needs now. Yeah.
James?
Okay, so kind of a segue to what the discussion was there about high-end users. I moved here in two thousand thirteen from the San Joaquin Valley, which is in California. It's near a heated desert, right? And we live in Buffalo Creek. And I'm a high-end user. In two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I get invoices in the vehicle, thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars of water. So what did I do? I got a water feature, it's on my yard. I got a water feature in the backyard that's dust. I've had two fruit trees that have died. No more hanging plants, no more raised garden beds. And back then, the invoices were maybe a hundred eighty, maybe two hundred dollars for the water. Now, I cringe when I go above fourteen or hit fifteen, and I'm two hundred ninety-five dollars. What else do I have to give up? Okay? And we're talking about high-end users. I can introduce you to all my neighbors on Iron Horse Way, and they will tell you the same story that I will tell you. We gave this up. What did we do wrong as residents to deserve this? Okay? And then what I just got done hearing, we're talking about, you know, how are we gonna control the price of the water? What are we doing on the backend for the service delivery? What are we doing to mitigate the cost for operating the plants? What's the long-term vision? I was fortunate enough to work for one company for thirty-four years. And over those thirty-four years, I had wage freezes, I had lost a vacation. A young lady over there talked about going to a retreat. Our recruits were canceled, our trips were canceled. The company cut back to survive in a volatile industry, which is the oil and gas. And this is probably not the platform to talk about, but we're talking about, we wanna keep our level like it is, but we wanna keep the rates down to the residents. But we also have to look at the backend. How do we reduce the operating cost to the consumers? We, we can't lose focus of that, because I will invite any one of you trustees to my property, and I can show you what I had and what I have today. And then you can tell me what I did wrong. So I'm, I'm excited to be here. I bring a different perspective to the, the, the group, I hope. We talk about commercial users here. And what I'm hearing is little restaurants and things like that, Soul Square. Does anybody knock on Slumager's door and ask them how it's affected them? That's probably the largest commercial business you have in town here in revenue. I retired from Slumager, thirty-four years with them. I know how they operate. Okay? So this is probably not the right platform for this, but you hit a nerve when everybody's talking about high-end users. I'm a high-end user. I'm down to fifteen thousand now. What else can I give up?
Yeah, there's always gonna be a breaking point for sure. Thank you for. Uh, trustee Teets?
Um, so I think that the generalized idea is we assign people to this board, well, committee, for the specific purpose that each and every single one of them bring unique traits that have experience in looking at this kind of stuff, but also have residential and business experience. I am comfortable with the route they choose to go when they are looking at how they're implementing tier structures and items like that. I think I still feel strongly that we need not abuse the high-end users. I will still tout that till my last day. But also, at the same time, I still feel that there needs to be some equality there. I mean, Ms. Sholay can collect, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they did this rate study before, you literally had businesses with eight-dollar water bills.
Yeah, well, I don't remember the business. It was irrigation that was the real. Yeah, they were like paying five dollars. It was insane.
And this was for years, years and years and years. So residents carried the commercial for years and years and years. So I think.
Predominantly, trustee Teets, I just wanna get that out there so we, we don't lose sight of, or, or get down a terrible rabbit hole, but it, it was predominantly irrigation and it was the fact that multifamily was paying a significantly high rate compared to the stress that they put on the system. So that was multifamily went down, irrigation went dramatically up, and commercial went up as well.
Got it. So I just, I want, when we're looking at these rates, I think bear in mind that this has been one of those things and these tiers can be, like Mr. Raymond said, abusive to people that they're giving up a massive amount. When they moved in and bought their homes, they never planned on water costing this much. I, I didn't plan on water costing this much when I bought my homes. They're dealing with it the best that they can. Yes, is it gonna be a higher price? Yeah, but I mean, there is a drastic difference in that third tier, like, huge. So, and I don't know how that gets fixed, but I trust that this committee is going to look at everything and be extremely open to hearing what Raffalas and the town and the information that gets shared. We have to remember, this will also come back before us so we can ask questions, get answers, and I, I trust you guys to definitely work in the best interest of our community. Mr. Sophie Seiver, I'm not sure that that completely answers the question that you had asked. If it doesn't, I apologize, but I think some of this stuff needs to be left up to you guys.
Fair enough.
I just had a couple of things to clarify. A lot of the conversations clarify things, so thank you, because some of my questions were already answered. So a couple of questions I do have. So I understand we have a structure that was put together by the last round table. I got presented that, so I understand that. But I do wanna clarify that we are able to come in as a group to sit down and say, okay, where are the priorities? Or if we think we wanna adjust a thing as a group, we're free to do that, correct? We're not rewriting the whole system, but if we say, hey, we think maybe there's some different values that we should focus on, that's kind of on us as a group to decide what are the values. I just wanna make sure that that is correct understanding. Yes. Okay, perfect. Um, second question I. Um, second question I have, um, fair share has been brought up a lot, equity. Are you guys good with us coming up with our definition of what that is, or do you want to give us, okay?
Everybody's is different.
Okay, because I was like, if you have a set in mind, this is what we need. I'd like to know that going in, otherwise we can come up better. The third question is in terms of when we have our meetings, I understand we're working with Craft Alice. Um, obviously, we're gonna be having conversation discussion. Is there a preset structure in terms of, okay, this is how you're voting or how you're going through things that the town or Raft Alice has created? Or is that on us as a round table to put that together for ourselves as far as how are we gonna vote or how are we gonna run our meetings?
I would say that's on your boot.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put together a charter as part of the first group meeting.
Okay, perfect. Um, I think those are the questions I have. Uh, I would have the same challenge to James Raymond's side. Obviously, a lot of times we look at the revenue side. There's always two sides to every equation, right? If you guys as a board are able to set a budget and work with the town to lower costs, that's the other half of that. We can't do anything with that. That's on you guys, so.
Anything further? Uh, trustee, Teets, you raise your hand again?
No, I keep forgetting to lower it. I apologize.
Good. Okay, is that enough? Direction?
Yeah. I felt amply directed, directed. I thought you were gonna say have to plant.
Well, with that being said, thank you, everybody, for being here this evening, all the input. This is, this is gonna be really good. So thank you all for, once again.
Um, our, our first formal rate advisory group meeting is scheduled for May twenty-eighth. Looking for some non-in confirmation.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I think that's correct. And, um, I will, I will be your, uh, main point of contact for the great advisory group. So if you guys have questions, if you have a scheduling conflicts or concerns or need information, historical data, you know, that, that sort of thing, please feel free to reach out to me. Um, you should all have my direct email address, um, my cell number is included in my email signature even. I respond to texts well. I also check my emails far too incessantly, so.
Okay, what time is it?
Should be, that's a good question. Do we do six to seven thirty or six thirty to eight? I think we did six.
That sounds right. Did you send out a schedule for these meetings?
No, we haven't. That was on me to do this thing.
One small request, are you gonna mostly do them on Wednesdays?
No, and it's, it bounces between, uh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Okay, well, as long as they're not the second or third Wednesday of the month, we're good. I have a prior commitment, so.
Well, I, I had commitments and I had to change my schedule to accommodate this.
Yeah.
I'm a, I'm a cleaning commissioner for the county. They're not gonna change their schedule.
Selected, Ms. Scholay, it was selected where, yeah, if you, if you didn't get an email from me, it means that you selected, yes, that you could attend.
Okay, that's good.
That was selected.
That helps.
So the time, again, did we?
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And I will send those out.
That would be great.
Uh, calendar invites out tomorrow.
Perfect. Any further questions? No. All right, well, that is a night. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Look forward to it as well.